It is 6:32 and we do have a quorum of our Board of Safety members present. So I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Board of Public Safety to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. We have commissioners attending in person. For the record, I have Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner McLeod, and Commissioner Battle. With that said, before we get into the agenda, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag? Okay. So item one on the agenda is public comment. And this is when I usually turn the meeting over to the chiefs to do their presentations. So before taking the vote to open to the public, Chief Baldwin and Deputy Chief Barone.
Good evening. My name is Chief Bill Baldwin, and this is Deputy Chief Bart Barone. It's been way too long with too much time having passed since we recognized our members of our department for the exceptional job that they have done and continue to do. COVID, the pandemic, as well as other extenuating circumstances and logistics have delayed this long awaited evening. It is both mine and Deputy Chief Barone's great pleasure and honor to welcome you all to this special occasion as we recognize and celebrate the remarkable achievements of the dedicated officers who serve and protect our community with unwavering commitment. Our police officers face immense challenges each day, often putting their own lives on the line to ensure our safety. Their bravery, integrity, and dedication are the foundation of our community's security and well-being. Tonight, we have the privilege of acknowledging those who have gone above and beyond the call of duty, officers who have demonstrated extraordinary courage, professionalism, and compassion in their service. These awards are not just a recognition of individual excellence, but a testament to the values that guide our police force: honor, service, and commitment to justice. They remind us of the profound impact that one officer can have, not only on the people they serve, but on the fabric of our entire community. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the families and friends of our officers. Your support and understanding play a crucial role in enabling these heroes to perform the duties with dedication we honor today. We are deeply grateful for the sacrifices that you make alongside of them. To all of our officers, whether you are being recognized here today or continue to serve quietly without public acknowledgement, please know that your work does not go unnoticed. The mayor, the commissioners of the Board of Public Safety, the city council, and other city leaders, as well as the community, appreciates you. We stand united in our admiration and respect for the essential role that you all play in answering the calls for service to help keep us safe. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing seven individuals for various exceptional actions that they have taken in the performance of their duties. These officers were chosen to receive these awards by members of the department's awards committee, which is made up of the officer's peers. The committee reviews and discusses the incidents for which the officer has been nominated and determines if the criteria have been met to achieve the said award. The awards will be presented this evening are the following awards: the Life Saving Award, the Chief Citation, and the Exceptional Duty Award. Deputy Chief Barone will read a description of the awards and the requirements to achieve them. Tonight, we're going to start off with a Life Saving Award that will be given to officers, to two officers.
The Life Saving Medal is presented to an officer for an act performed in line of duty where disregard for personal safety or prompt and alert action resulted in the saving of a life.
Our first nominee is Officer Chris Abling. If you can come up, please.
On March 30th, 2019, at approximately 60:09 hours, Officer Christopher Abling and Pfeiffer were detailed to the cliffs overlooking Route 8, located at the end of Patterson Street, for reported suicidal male. On arrival, Officer Abling located the male sitting only inches away from the edge of the 50-foot cliff. Below lay a rocky bed and speeding motorists on Route 8. Officer Abling attempted to reason with the male for some time until he found the male that the male was determined to end his own life. During the verbal altercation, Officer Abling seized a moment of opportunity and grabbed the male by the arm. Capitalizing on Officer Abling's opportunity, Officer Pfeiffer also grabbed the male. And seeing the officers were attempting to stop him from jumping, the male now went from suicidal to homicidal. The male became extremely angry and began to struggle with the officers by punching and kicking them. During the altercation, the male kneeed and punched Officer Abling in the head several times, attempting to break free from the officer's grasp. After a lengthy struggle and the assistance of fellow officers who had responded, the male was ultimately subdued and handcuffed and carried off the cliff to awaiting ambulance. He was then transported to Charlotte Hungerford, where he received the much-needed help. Officer Abling, you are being commended for your actions this day. You were not only subdued a combative suicidal male, but did so as you risked your own life and limb beyond the scope of your training and without hesitation to save the life of a member of this community. Officer Abling, your efforts and accomplishments reflect distinct credit upon yourself, the Torrington Police Department, and the City of Torrington.
Our next recipient, Officer Dan Seer.
On October 19th, 2019, Officer Seer was in his boat with his brother and a friend fishing off the coast of Bridgeport. At about 1700 hours, they were headed back to shore when Officer Seer noticed a person standing or floating in the water waving at him. He was near Stafford Stroll Lighthouse, which is about 15 miles from shore. He immediately changed course and approached what he later found were three males in the water, one of which was shivering uncontrollably. Officer Seer noticed the parties were on a submerged keel of a boat. They immediately brought all three males aboard his boat. Officer Seer radioed the Coast Guard and advised them of what they had. Bridgeport Fire was first on scene with medics. Once vitals were checked, they advised that one of the males was in dire condition and needed transport as soon as possible. All the parties were transported to local hospitals and treated. The water temperature at the time was approximately 64 degrees. Officer Seer later contacted Bridgeport firefighter Daniel Resslow, who was one of the medical personnel on scene, and he advised the officer that the male was suffering from severe hypothermia, likely would have not survived if he had been in the water for a few minutes longer. Officer Seer, your efforts and accomplishments reflect distinct credit upon yourself, the department, and the City of Torrington.
Congratulations. Next, we will be administering five awards for the Chief Citation.
The Chief Citation is an award presented for the accomplishment will be awarded by the chief for the following conditions: self-initiated apprehension of a felony suspect where the crime was in progress; displaying initiative in solving a crime which results in the solution and clearance of other criminal cases.
Lieutenant Bruyard, will you come forward?
On August 11th, 2020, Detective Fedor, Sergeant Johnson, and Lieutenant Bruyard requested to respond to 540 Litchfield Street, Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, for a report of a male victim that had been stabbed multiple times. Upon their arrival, detectives learned the stabbing was a result of a robbery attempt. The victim was lured to 336 North Elm Street, a parking area across the street from The Barn. The victim reported he was asked via Snapchat to meet up with a female friend to provide marijuana. The victim further stated that as soon as he had arrived and exited his vehicle, he was viciously attacked by an unknown male that was armed with a knife. The victim sustained multiple stab wounds from the male, which included his neck and his chest. The victim was assaulted by two other female suspects on scene. The victim was able to break free and flee the scene, ultimately ending up at the hospital for treatment. Detective Fedor, Sergeant Johnson, and Lieutenant Bruyard were able to identify two of the female parties on scene and later learn of an address where the suspects could possibly be located in Litchfield. Detectives were unsuccessful in locating any suspects on the night of the robbery as they were being watched on surveillance cameras, and the parties inside their residence refused to come to the door. The main suspect later identified as Brady Stedman was unknown at the time of the incident. The only information that detectives were given was a first name of Bradley. That was likely during one of the female suspects. Multiple search warrants were written for Snapchat records, vehicles, and cellular phone records, which ultimately assisted in putting all of the pieces together to clarify what happened during the incident. At this time of time, an arrest warrant had been issued for this individual, charging him with assault first and robbery first. Arrest warrants for multiple other suspects were expected as well. Lieutenant Bruyard, your dedication, hard work, and thoroughness throughout this entire investigation bring much deserved credit to yourself, the Torrington Police Department, and the City of Torrington. Nice job.
Our next recipient, Lieutenant Michael Di Torrio.
While receiving incident reports, Captain Johnson found that Lieutenant Di Torrio had been instrumental in assisting the Torrington Police Department Detective Division with solving a series of burglaries involving copper piping being stolen from foreclosed homes throughout the city of Torrington. As cases were further reviewed, it was found that Lieutenant Di Torrio directly impacted the investigation, which resulted in identifying the suspect in a number of burglary cases within Torrington, as well as numerous incidents in surrounding towns with varying degrees of solvability. As a result of the actions, the suspect was arrested for six separate instances in Torrington with additional charges and arrests likely to follow from other jurisdictions. The following is a summary of the actions taken by Lieutenant Di Torrio to bring this case to a close. On May 14th, 2019, Lieutenant Di Torrio dispatched to the area of 147 Laurel Hill Road for a possible burglary of copper piping. Upon arrival, a witness reported observing suspicious behavior at a nearby neighborhood party from a male suspect who had already left the scene. The witness was able to provide license plate information to police. It was at this time that officers determined a possible burglary suspect. A phone interview was conducted a short time later, which only increases suspicions based on the suspect's explanation about why he was at the residence and how he had obtained the copper piping. The suspect would return to the location a short time later, operating a different vehicle than had been observed earlier, and not in possession of all the stolen copper piping from the residence. The suspect was detained. Lieutenant Di Torrio then conducted a neighborhood canvas and located another male at a residence nearby which had fresh tracks in the dirt. Upon further investigations, Lieutenant Di Torrio located a broken outside window, and copper piping was removed from the basement of this residence as well. Lieutenant Di Torrio would go on to contact Liberty Recycling and discovered that the suspect had been at the business earlier in the day in a gray truck recycling copper piping. It was later found that markings on the copper pipe suspect had turned in, that the markings on the copper pipes, the suspect had turned in matched descriptions of pipe found during the neighborhood canvas. Lieutenant Di Torrio contacted Safeguard Properties, the business the suspect reportedly worked for securing foreclosed properties, and was advised of four different properties being identified. A search warrant was later drafted for the vehicle the suspect was operating, at which time burglary tools along with copper piping, property from miscellaneous residents, and drug paraphernalia was found. In conducting this investigation, Lieutenant Di Torrio brought great credit upon himself, the Torrington Police Department. His work ethic shows that tenacity and perseverance in difficult and convoluted situations can yield positive results that directly impact our community. Thank you for your hard work.
Congratulations. Our next recipient, Sergeant Matt Gonska.
On September 26th, 2023, at approximately 01:35 hours, Officer Lox was conducting a traffic post at the 200-block section of Winston Road and observed a vehicle traveling south on Winston Road at a high rate of speed. The traffic stop was effectuated in the area of the police department in the north end. The subject vehicle, a 2021 Dodge Charger, initially stopped but sped off as Officer Lox exited his vehicle. The subject vehicle was observed passing other vehicles as it fled at a high rate of speed, traveling east on East Elm Street. Officer Lox remained stationary, and the vehicle description was relayed to adjoining agencies. At approximately 01:47 in the morning, state police relayed that the subject vehicle had crashed on Route 8 South, just south of Exit 42. Officer Lox and Sergeant Gonska responded to the scene, where Sergeant Gonska located the operator who was registered owner of the vehicle, walking south on Route 8, several hundred feet south of the crash. It was determined she was the operator and the sole occupant of the vehicle. Subsequent investigation by the state police and Torrington police resulted in the suspect being charged with DWI and with reckless driving, engaging police in pursuit, and traveling to faster conditions. A canine search of the crash scene by Officer Lox and Canine Pharaoh yielded the location of a semi-automatic handgun in the area between the crash and where the suspect was located. The firearm was turned over to the state police. A check of the state police records for the suspect showed several pending cases with charges including illegal transfer of firearms, carrying a pistol without a permit, threatening with intent to terrorize and assault on a public safety official. The suspect formerly of 122 Pitten Avenue, Torrington, has an extensive juvenile record with Torrington PD, including charges of auto theft and burglary. The location of the firearm by Officer Lox and Canine Pharaoh resulted in the state police adding additional charges of criminal possession of a firearm and illegal possession of weapons in a motor vehicle. The suspect was transported to the state police troop out for processing. Assault team effort and coordination with other agencies yielded a quality arrest and got an illegal firearm off the streets. The traffic stop and the pursuit protocol followed by Officer Lox, Canine Pharaoh's successful location of the subject firearm, and Sergeant Gonska's supervisory response and handling of the multi-agencies seen are all contributory factors that culminated in this example of what happens when everything is done right. I would like to congratulate Sergeant Gonska for a job well done.
Sergeant Gonska is also going to be receiving a second Chief Citation Award.
On June 9th, 2020, at approximately 02:34 hours, Officer Gonska was one of the officers to respond to Town Farm Road for a report of a motor vehicle accident, where it was reported that the involved vehicle was currently engulfed in flames with some of the occupants trapped inside. Ultimately, two of the juvenile passengers inside the vehicle died as a result of the fire crash. One of the juvenile occupants was seriously injured, and the two remaining juvenile passengers suffered minor injuries. Sergeant Gonska at the time, Officer Gonska at the time, was tasked with being the primary investigator of this horrific crash and was responsible with making initial contact with the injured driver's passengers, as well as their families while they were being treated at the hospital. Officer Gonska was able to maintain a professional demeanor and offer compassionate assistance to the victims and their families during a time when none of the families were on the defensive as to the children's possible culpability and involvement in the crash. This led to tense moments while at the hospital, as the adult family members did not want to discuss the particulars of the crash. Officer Gonska was able to speak with the parties and offer assistance that he was concerned with their well-being and that they were receiving the prompt care and assistance while coping with the reality of what had just occurred. Officer Gonska worked diligently on investigating this case, which also involved meeting with both families of the deceased juveniles. Officer Gonska was tasked with answering uncomfortable questions about the particulars of the crash, as well as some of the details of the deceased that was requested. During these interviews, Officer Gonska showed tact and true compassion for what the families were going through, and offered would receive off-duty phone calls from the victim's family just to talk with them as they were dealing and coping with this difficult time. Officer Gonska always made himself available on and off-duty for those calls as he truly felt their pain while each family was coping with this tragic loss. Officer Gonska made a true connection with one of the victim's families, and he was invited to attend a family holiday or birthday party for the victim, which he did. Officer Gonska also met with the father of one of the victims at the crash site while off-duty to go over the entire scene with him. Officer Gonska spent hours with the father and explained that the crash began and ended, and how the crash began and ended, along with the location of the vehicle. While at the scene, the father disclosed to Officer Gonska that he was having a difficult time with the loss of his son and hadn't worked a full day since. The father expressed his gratitude at the time Officer Gonska spent with him and the fact that he now had a better understanding of what had transpired the night of the crash as he was a visual person. As a result of Officer Gonska's investigation, an arrest warrant submitted and approved, and the operator was charged accordingly. Officer Gonska conducted a thorough investigation and was able to personify what it means to go above and beyond as an investigator, as he took the time to meet with the family members as he displayed a genuine concern for their well-being and assist them with the ability to cope with each family's tragic loss, bringing some of this to a closure for them. Officer Gonska represented himself, the entire accident investigation team, the Torrington Police Department, the City of Torrington, in a positive manner through his hard work and dedication in this case. You should be proud of your accomplishment and hard work.
Thank you for what you did. Keep up the great work. Our next recipient, Sergeant Kyle Johnson.
On August 11th, 2020, Detective Fedor, Sergeant Johnson, and Lieutenant Bruyard requested to respond to 540 Litchfield Street at Charlotte Hungerford Hospital for a reported male victim that had been stabbed multiple times. Upon arrival, detectives learned the stabbing was a result of a robbery attempt. The victim was lured to 336, 340 North Elm Street, a parking lot across the street from The Barn. The victim reported he was asked via Snapchat to meet up with a female friend to provide marijuana. The victim further stated that as soon as he arrived and exited his vehicle, he was viciously attacked by an unknown male that was armed with a knife. The victim sustained multiple stab wounds from the male, including to his neck and chest. The victim also was assaulted by two female suspects on the scene, and the victim was able to break free and flee the scene, ultimately ending up at the hospital for treatment. So I just read this for Sergeant, for Lieutenant Bruyard. And Detective Fedor is going to be getting the same award. So Todd, would you come up here as well, so we don't have to repeat this? But what's that? So Detective, I'll continue with the story. So Detective Fedor, Sergeant Johnson, Lieutenant Bruyard were able to identify two female parties on scene and later learn of an address where the suspects could possibly be located in Litchfield. Detectives were unsuccessful locating any suspects on the night of the robbery as they were being watched on surveillance cameras, and the party or parties inside the residence refused to come to the door. The main suspect later identified as Bradley Stedman was unknown at the time of the incident. The only information that detectives were given was a first name of Bradley, that was likely dating one of the female suspects. The individuals involved in this incident were mostly unknown to Torrington Police at the time. Through a diligent and exhausting investigation into possible names, vehicles, and through multiple different information sources, Detective Fedor was able to identify Stedman as a likely suspect who stabbed the victim during the robbery. Multiple search warrants were written for Snapchat records, vehicles, and cellular phone calls, which ultimately assisted in putting all of the pieces together to clarify what happened during this incident. At this time, an arrest warrant had been issued for Stedman, charging him with assault first and robbery first, and arrest warrants for other multiple suspects were conducted as well. Sergeant Johnson and Detective Fedor, your dedication, hard work, and thoroughness for the entire investigation is very much deserved and a credit to yourselves, the Torrington Police Department, the City of Torrington, and this community. Excellent job by y'all. Thank you so much.
Okay, our final award recipient this evening will be the Exceptional Duty Award. Officer Seer, if you can come forward again.
The Exceptional Duty Award is presented to an officer as a highly credible accomplishment which brings recognition to this officer, this department, and the police profession as a result of training, devotion to duty, or service to the public.
On February 3rd, 2024, Officer Seer was detailed to American Best Value Inn located at 3995 Winston Road to speak with an elderly victim that suffered from dementia about her missing vehicle. Officers have been detailed to this location on several occasions over the past year due to the victim and her spouse having dementia and their failing health. Upon disarrival of Officer Seer, he identified that the victim required medical attention and placed her in protective custody, then completed an elderly services report. Gaining information from the victim was difficult during this investigation. However, he discovered that a caretaker had recently been attached to the victim's bank account and that this same caretaker had taken the missing vehicle to a local mechanic. After locating the vehicle and placing the victim in protective custody, Officer Seer could have considered this case closed. However, sensing something was amiss, he went to the victim's bank and made inquiries into her accounts. Officer Seer lays with the bank's security officer, and on 2/7/23, he was able to identify that the above-mentioned caretaker had made suspicious purchases and was misusing the victim's bank account. Officer Seer also determined that the vehicle may have been misused by the caretaker. Officer Seer was able to get the victim's bank accounts frozen, which worked with the above mechanic shop to prevent the victim's vehicle from being misused. He then went even further and contacted elderly services again with whom he had made a report to on the victim's behalf several days prior. Officer Seer determined that elderly services had not yet began their work on the victim's case. He was unable to ensure a caseworker was assigned to the case and worked alongside elderly services to get the victim in their care. Officer Seer then determined the victim had been released from the hospital and returned to the inn. He was directed by elderly services to place her into protective custody again due to her dementia. At that point, elderly services would then have her placed alongside her husband in the same retirement recovery home. While performing these tasks, he was able to assist the victim in opening new bank accounts with the bank managers that her social security benefits would not be disrupted. Officer Seer then ensured that the victim was placed in the care of the Department of Social Services and that her assets would be controlled by saying. Officer Seer, you went above and beyond in this investigation to assure that the victim was properly cared for. Your actions are in keeping with the high traditions of law enforcement, and they reflect distinct credit upon yourself, the Torrington Police Department, and the City of Torrington.
Nice job. As we come to the end of this awards recognition ceremony, understand that these awards presented symbolize not just personal achievement, but the collective commitment to a higher standard of service, courage, and integrity within our community. To the officers that received an award this evening, know that your dedication has shown brightly. Your stories of bravery, perseverance, and selflessness inspire us all and remind us of the profound impact that one individual's efforts, namely yours, can have on the safety and well-being of an entire community. To the families and friends of those that were honored here this evening, your support and sacrifices do not go unnoticed. The strength of our officers is deeply rooted in the love, support, and encouragement that they receive from you. And to our community, this evening's ceremony is a testament to the strong partnership between those who serve and those who benefit from their service. It is a reminder that we are all part of a shared mission to uphold justice, promote safety, and foster a more secure environment for everyone. In closing, the deputy chief and I want to extend our deepest gratitude to all of you who continue to support and uplift our officers in their daily endeavors. As you leave here tonight, reflect with renewed commitment to our shared values and our heartfelt appreciation for the heroic work that our police officers do every day. As a reminder, we'll be presenting additional awards at next month's Board of Public Safety meeting on October 2nd. We hope to see you there. Thank you all for being here, and may God bless and protect each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now, as I'm watching the officers and their families leave, I just want to take a moment, especially for the young people that are here. I hope that you all understand and realize how grateful and proud we are I hope that you all understand and realize how grateful and proud we are of the police officers that serve this community beyond their, their courage, instinct and compassion. They make us proud every single day. I'm sure they make all of you proud as well. And I hope that you'll find it, especially the young boys and girls in the audience. I hope that maybe you'll find it in your heart to consider following in their footsteps in your future. So thank you for the officers that are celebrated here tonight and to the rest of the department that supports this community. So there goes our public. So this is still the public comment. Before I move into the next agenda item, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, second by Commissioner Benedetto. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris, did you want to make any comment? You're good. All right. Then we'll move into item seven, excuse me, item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from August 7th, 2024. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention for the record is Commissioner Battle. Item three, I will entertain a motion to utilize state contract number 15 PSX 0112 for the purchase of fire department washer extractor from Daniels Equipment Company of Auburn, New Hampshire. To be paid from the fire department capital reserve account in the amount of $23,632, having been previously approved by the city council.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to award the purchase of the, of two Trek electric bikes to Benadorm Bikes of Canton, Connecticut in the amount of $11,799.90. Having previously been approved by the city council, funding for this purchase will be from the police department capital reserve account.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. And second by Commissioner McElroy. Are there questions?
Deputy Chief, was any safety gear, like helmets included? Get new helmets?
Other questions?
When's the test ride?
Are they gonna do it?
The chief and deputy.
It's no competition. All right, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item five, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the replacement of the radio repeater located in University Drive to Marcus Communications of Manchester, Connecticut. In the amount of $24,065.50 pending city council approval. This purchase will be funded from the police department's capital reserve as further explained in police chief's letter dated August 28th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McElroy, second by Commissioner Benedetto. Questions or comments? Nothing. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's reports for July 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments?
You've just, one comment on the parking ticket money. I see it's creeping back up to almost a half a million. Are we collecting any? I mean, or is it just we're handing out that many tickets?
We're issuing more tickets, but we are collecting Sergeant Baldus has been doing an exceptional job collecting monies. Especially those late payments that we've been getting those people that haven't been paying. He's been able to boot cars more regularly. Those numbers, you're going to see that number fluctuate. But he's working tirelessly on bringing those numbers down and we are collecting more.
So our system's working?
Yes. Yeah, the system's actually a very incredible system that we currently have that Sergeant Baldus had put in place.
Great, thank you.
Anything on that?
It is tied in, I believe we are up and tied in with DMV now with that program that Sergeant Baldus was putting together.
Mr. McLeod?
I had a couple of quick questions, but first of all, thanks for breaking down the, all the calls a little bit more in a different format. That was much clearer and better information. I, just my one question, I was very surprised to read that you had to call in Spanish speaking officer. I thought we had a couple. Or did?
We, we do, and they're available. We'll use our officers first. Anytime we need additional services, if it's not exigent, we will always rely on our officers first and call them back to do that. The situation was we didn't have, for the amount, for the number of Spanish speaking officers that we do have, we just didn't have anybody available at that time. And there was a need to get a Spanish speaking officer to assist us. We do the same for other departments and other agencies. If they're requiring a Spanish speaking officer and we have one that's on duty. That officer will be respond to that department or that agency to help them with interpretation as well. So it's a mutual agreement between departments within our.
And I thought we had a couple. I just, obviously it's very much more important today in the community. So I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Any other questions on the chief's report? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept Fire Chief Borden's reports for July 2024.
So moved.
I heard motion made by Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McElroy. Any questions on the report?
Deputy, just question on the report that you handed us? There's a lot, there's a lot of empty spaces. There's addresses, but no. Do you see that?
Yes, so those are, those are the reports from officers. So they're not filled out totally yet.
I could, I could hand it to you if you'd like.
No, I see. I got pulled my phone. Yeah, that's what it looks like. If they're, if they're blanks, it's a call that the officer hasn't filled out the report yet.
But that's just from the officer's report and
Yeah.
There's like 75.
A bunch. There was, there's a bunch from the storm. We had, there's 100 in the storm and I know I have one lieutenant I spoken to who's the majority of those. So.
Okay. And just one more question. Are fire marshals offices fully staffed now?
Fully staffed. There'll be my report, it just starts training on Monday with the state.
Great. And cadets? We got how many in academy?
Zero. Zero.
Zero.
There was no budget in our first half of the year. We have two budgeted for January, for the February class.
Thank you.
Other questions on the, on Chief Borden's report? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the EMS provider activity report for July 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the department, excuse me, by the Board of Safety Policy Subcommittee.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And I heard a second by Commissioner Battle. And representing the policy committee, anything?
I think we just tabled this because we hadn't been able to have a meeting in the last month.
Okay. All right, so motion to table made by Commissioner McLeod. Do I have a second? On the motion to table?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner McElroy. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we'll table that next month. And I will just remind the board that our decision to keep this as a regular agenda item is just that constant reminder that policy work is happening. Item 10, excuse me. Item 10, I will entertain a motion to consider business by the volunteer fire department.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And from Drakeville, anything this evening?
Good evening, Mayor, Chiefs, Commissioners, Lieutenant Bay is with Drakeville. You probably saw our report. The chief does a nice comprehensive job of outlining everything kind of that's going on at the department, calls. We're happy to report for the month of August that we were dispatched to 13 calls and we made all 13 calls with an average crew of three interiors and one exterior. So we've been working really hard at, at increasing our ranks. We're up to 10 interior firefighters. We just had new two new probationary members join two weeks ago, which is bringing our membership close to 20. So kind of you know, decades ago, we had those kinds of numbers. So we're happy to be going back there. One thing I just want to put on everybody's radar is our firefighters ball. So we're celebrating 75 years this year. Drakeville first went into service in 1949. So this is our 75 years. We're having a fireman's ball at the Elks. I think I emailed all of you. Thank you, Commissioner McLeod for your acknowledgement. You know, we'd love to see as many people there as possible, whether from police, fire, friends, family, anybody. It's open to the public. Other than that, any?
What was the date on that again?
September 28th, Saturday, September 28th. And I can leave some flyers for you guys as well. Other than that, there's no questions?
Any questions?
Congratulations on getting out all 13. I think this is the first time and I've been on the board. He went perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we've, like I said, we've, we've, we've been working really hard to train more drivers and increase our interior ranks and so.
Please relay the message.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, item 11, I'll entertain a motion to, oh. I was gonna say, just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss Torrington. They're not on the line.
Yeah, Gary's.
Gary, is that Gary?
Di Auto?
No.
No. Di Auto isn't, yeah, I'm on Di Auto. I don't think so.
Okay, Di Torio. Got it. All right, then I'm going to move into item 11. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, second by Commissioner Benedetto. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To you, Chief Baldwin.
Good evening. As you already heard, our next awards presentations will be at the next Board of Safety meeting. Two officers are currently on our FTO program. One just came off our FTO program as a, as a regular officer out in the, in the street right now. And we also have another one coming off in a couple of weeks. So we'll have one on FTO through October. We currently have two officers in the academy right now. Our hiring process continues. We're participating in a law enforcement recruitment fair on September 13th at the Police Academy in Meriden. It's hosted by the state. Multiple law enforcement agencies will be at this event to include our agency as well. The backpack giveaway that we had a week ago at the Co Park as part of the PALS initiative for the back to school was a huge success. We gave over, under a thousand, just under a thousand backpacks away. We also gave away over 80 bike helmets to kids in need who needed some bicycle helmets. And I understand, Commissioner, you were there to also assist with setting up, Commissioner, so we appreciate your, your help on that day. There's a car seat safety program that's being hosted by both us and the fire department. Deputy Chief Trip, Chief Borden, myself, Deputy Chief Verone are, have, put the dates aside. The dates are set aside for September 16th at the fire department where Lieutenant Matthews will be doing a car seat safety, car seat safety installation on the 16th. And Sergeant Baldus will be doing a car seat safety on September 19th at the traffic barn on Wythe Street. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Deputy Chief, anything this evening?
Good, Mayor, thanks.
To the fire department, anything this evening, Deputy Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everybody. Tomorrow's going to be the, the MDA annual boot drive around town. It's going to be interesting to see with all the construction going on. September 11th, we're going to have our annual ceremony at the North End Station. And honoring that. On September 20th, we have an FD versus PD softball fundraiser at Fusion's Park for Tower for, or the Tunnel for Towers fundraiser. So that's coming up on the 20th, Friday. Radios, our opera radios, our portables and mobiles, all the portables came in. Program took an extra four weeks with the state between Marcus and the state, but we're actually operating those. Those are working fantastic. We're still in training a few extra stragglers that haven't had the training because they were off. So the portables are in service. Mobiles, we just got word yesterday morning from Norcom that every, all the equipment's been received for us in water pollution. So I'm doing a walk through down there and check all the equipment out on Tuesday with, with the chance, just Sonic. And then we're going to start installing our mobiles into our apparatus. I'm sure everybody's been aware of all the construction going on in the city this year. For some reason, we're getting a lot of gas line strikes. We've had four, three pretty major. One of them was on a backfill, wasn't even, it was an accident, basically. A little nipple came off when they were backfilling it with process and that was a minor leak. So it's been costing us a little bit of overtime. I've reached out to our liaison at EverSource. And he's setting up a meeting with the gas supervisors from Franklin Street with the chief and I to see if there's any way, you know, how EverSource recoups their costs when they get called out because they have to obviously replace and redig of those lines, how they do it and how we can either batch with them, you know, piggyback on them or, you know, get them on our own. It is considered a hazmat, so we should be able to recoup our costs. I just don't know which companies, if it's just one company or there's multiple different companies that are doing this. So we have, we're, my liaison's really well, really good. Tim Aldrin, if you don't remember Tim. So he's, he's working that for me right now and getting us a meeting with EverSource.
I got, I got a question on the gas leak today. Or the break, whatever you want to call it. So can you go through the protocol on how it works? Before you call the callbacks, do we tone out our volunteers first?
When we call, when we have a callback, we tell the volunteers. Both volunteers did respond today. As well as Winston and Harmington Westside for coverage.
So do you call before you bring your guys back? Do you call volunteers first?
It's the same time. It's supposed to be the same time. If, if, you know, if we just call back for coverage, we're not calling, the volunteers may go to station. Which it did today. And then if it goes to a second alarm, the volunteers definitely get dispatched. That's automatic on a second alarm. But Drakeville came to headquarters today, the same by headquarters. Drakeville has been responding and they've been a big help. They've actually been around there today getting a crew. So that's really good to see.
So they wouldn't respond to the scene, they respond to the firehouse?
That's all on the incident commander. Yeah. They have come to the scene. They have, you know, so that's all, I'm the incident commander that's on scene to hear that. Site control.
Any other questions for Deputy Chief?
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, anything from Trinity this evening? Jeff?
Hi. So I spoke to you about this before, Mayor, but recently state of Connecticut OEMS enhanced the medical protocols that we follow both as EMTs and paramedics. So this was something that was not mandatory for our folks, but Trinity adopted these more advanced protocols, especially for our EMTs. So there was a lot of training involved, months of training for some of these advanced procedures and medications. So they're rolled out, so we should be seeing these out in the fields here. I'm not going to bore you with all the technical information on that, but they are operating at the highest level that the state of Connecticut allows us for as EMTs. So really hoping that this makes some great improvements in patient care. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? All right, then item 12, I'll enter a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, second by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed this evening, starting with Commissioner Battle?
Yes, um. Thank you. Thank you guys for your service. We are just so proud and moved by, you know. Um, we are just so, um, proud and moved by, um, you know, by our officers, by, by the department as well. We, uh, we are, we really can't thank you enough for all that you do, but we want you to know that we truly do appreciate that, um, and just looking forward to the rest of the month, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, um, McLeod.
Clearly, congratulations to all the officers that were, uh, got the awards tonight. Too bad that it's, came to having to wait this long to do it all, but I'm glad we're starting to do that anyway. Um, I had a whole bunch of questions, but most of them have been answered except, uh, one other one I have. Uh, it's in regards to the policy committee, um, but this is me asking the question. It hasn't come up, and I think I brought up one last, last, um, meeting, and I don't want to be real picky, but it, it seems that other organizations or locations set their policies, and then we have to adapt ours to theirs. Like, you know, we don't have a guard down at, uh, Towers anymore, so we have to go there all the time with the Fire Department or Police Department. Charlotte Hungerford Hospital, we go up to help somebody with difficulty breathing in a lung rehab building. That doesn't make sense to me. The other day, we had a, um, sick person that we had to send a fire truck and ambulance up Hospital Hill to the emergency room parking lot to help a sick person. This doesn't make sense. I don't like to be so picky. Well, they won't come outside. Well, maybe we don't go there. Now what happens? I, I, you know, I don't want to be picky with all this stuff, but that is just bizarre to me that we're going, so if my wife takes me to the emergency room and I'm too sick in the parking lot, she gets me there, then she's got to call nine-one-one to get me into the building? It doesn't make sense.
I think some of those, um, things are their policies as far as, you know, some of their outer buildings where they have an emergency for, um, so I think they can't really wheel somebody, you know, through, um, mazes of, of, um, cars, et cetera, for that, so, um, yeah, it doesn't seem to make sense, but, um, there are times where, um, you know, things outside of the campus or somewhere out in the parking lot, you know, they may sometimes come over to assist, but, um, as far as transporting them, um, that's why they call nine-one-one.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, the hospital's a big parking lot and stuff, that someone might have called from the far end of the parking lot, but when I read the emergency room, I, I, come on.
Yeah, there's some, sometimes those are like the partial, um, building that's next door to there. Um, we, we receive a lot of calls from there, but, um, you know, as the crow flies, it seems like it's pretty close, but, um, in order to get all the way around to the emergency room, um, it's, it's actually a fairly long distance, so I think that's why they're calling us for that. It's, it's a separate building.
Yeah, I mean, this one came in, and again, I'm only as good as LCD text, and I, I appreciate that, but came in as emergency room parking lot. You know, I'm like, come on.
Yeah, I know.
But, but I mean, so we have to adjust our policy to theirs, that's kind of what I'm...
Yeah, I get it, and you know, we're obligated to respond when, when somebody calls nine-one-one, so it almost doesn't really matter where it is. We're obligated, um, you know, as a PSAP to respond to that, and, and we will. Um, again, we've, we've gone to, um, um, you know, we've gone to cardiac arrests in a building that's attached to there, and obviously their staff is there to assist us as well, but, um, you know, we, we still transport by ambulance just because even though the building's attached, it's, it's a pretty long maze to get all the way through there over to the emergency department, so, um, it happens more often probably than you think.
Still doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Okay.
So Jeff, uh, let me just touch on that, so they have doctors on scene, on site, and they're going to wait for you guys to get there?
Um, again, in some of the buildings, there may not necessarily be physicians, um...
But within running distance?
Uh, yeah, um, and again, I'm not sure, you know, if something happens in a partial hospital, that the emergency room's even aware of that.
Yeah.
So, um, I think obviously if somebody fell in the parking lot, um, security or somebody would contact them, and a lot of times, you know, the nurses or a physician is out there to evaluate the patient, but, um, again, there are people that pull into the parking lot directly, um, into the parking lot close to there that are in, you know, respiratory arrest or something. They will come out with a, with a stretcher and bring him in, but I think it kind of depends on the distance, if that makes sense.
You know, we always talk about and hear about how, you know, LCD has to ask all these questions, get all these dropdowns, and we come up with this. To me, it sounds like a little bit of communication where, when, if they get these answers from these folks, why don't they call the emergency room? You know, I mean, you, you know, i- is there waiting there and, you know, everything, everything that you all do is time-based, and the quicker you get there, the, the better the outcome is.
Yeah.
So they're waiting in the emergency room parking lot?
I think...
For an ambulance or a fire truck to get up Hospital Hill for how long?
Right.
Where they could have been treated five, ten minutes ago?
I think sometimes it...
It just doesn't make sense.
It depends on the conversation that LCD had with that caller. Sometimes they only give, um, short bursts of information and they hang up. And sometimes they attempt to call them back, but, you know, they're not going to play the back and forth, they, they, they dispatch somebody, so, um, and again, I'm not super familiar with, um, their dispatch protocol, but I, I see that a lot of times with like a hot response, you know, it's not coded as a Charlie or a Delta or an Echo, it just says a hot response. So I think in those instances, they were not able to garner a lot of information, and they made the best decision just to, um, to send resources on that.
I have a suggestion, Mayor, could we, um, request that Hartford Healthcare come here for a meeting, so we can ask them that question?
Yeah, I think if the board, yeah, if the board wants it.
A representative of some sort.
Sure, yeah.
We do everything.
I think it's a...
I know there's an answer for everything, but...
Yeah.
I'd like to hear their answer in front of the board.
Uh, yeah, and we can certainly do that. I'll reach out to Hartford Healthcare and ask if they can send a representative to the, um, next Board of Safety meeting or, uh, the one after that, so that these can be asked publicly, because I'm sure, to your point, the public would have the same questions. So hearing it, uh, at a public meeting is a good thing.
I know if I'm sitting in the emergency room sick, I'm not happy with that situation.
Sure, yeah.
You know.
If you go by ambulance, you go in faster.
I guess.
And to Jeff's point, you know, a lot of these decisions, you know, that there, it may just be that, it may just be a communication thing, but, uh, having their, them at the table, I think, is a good thing.
And, and again, I don't know the specifics of that incident, but as we're looking at all these, that popped up, and I'm, that just boggled me, you know?
There are some other considerations, too. Hospitals are short-staffed, and that's why when you come in...
So are we.
No, I understand, but when you, um, go in there with trauma or something serious, even if you need stitches, you're bleeding, you'll stay in the waiting, waiting room, the emergency room for quite some time. There's not a lot of help and a lot of people, um, that are surgeons and stuff. Most people have to get transported out of Charlotte Hungerford for any serious thing anyways. Um, you know, so that's, that's one reason, too. The other thing is, we're required by law to respond when somebody calls nine-one-one, so even though it's in a parking lot, once we get the call, we got to go. We can't say, well...
I'm not faulting the Fire Department or Trinity for going. I, I'm not faulting that at all, that's not where I'm going. My question is, why are you going in the first place? Why are you called in the first place? That's, that's my question.
Yeah, and I think some of the answers we're probably going to get from the hospital is a few things. One, they're understaffed, and when they only have a few people in the emergency room, I'm just saying, in the emergency room, uh, somebody's on the parking lot, they're not aware of it. The person's calling nine-one-one, and then we're getting the call, and it sounds funny to go to four, five forty Litchfield Street, uh, but they don't have sixteen doctors to just come running out every time there's an issue. They're busy, too. So, um, being in emergency services, police and fire, there's going to be a lot of answers you guys don't like to hear, um, but it's the way of the world now, and we're not going to be able to change a lot of things.
I, I had touched base with Chief Borden about this, and, uh, couldn't be here, and, um, he said that that had happened in Manchester also, that that was the policy over there also, so...
But I'd like to talk...
With all the excuses there are, I have a problem with the policy.
Okay. I would like to hear them come here, though, and see what their reasoning is or what they're dealing with, too, um, and find out if there is a medical emergency in your parking lot. If somebody doesn't run in to tell you and they just call nine-one-one, they're not going to know about it anyways. We all have to go now because we got the call, so it's, it's a, people have to know, maybe, I don't know, yeah, but it'll be nice to hear the person, uh...
Something that should be looked into, that's...
All they need to do is pick up the blue phone, and it goes right to the hospital. Very simple.
So, I do, I do agree, I, I think, and I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Benedetto suggesting that we bring them here because as a community hospital, um, and there may be other questions that the board members may have, um, outside of what are these calls, so, um, I'll, I'll reach out to them. I think it's a good idea. All right, Commissioner Benedetto, anything?
Um, just a couple of things. Uh, congratulations and thank you to your officers. Did a great job, you know, to go above and beyond. Um, thank the Torre to please, Chris Medick and Powell, City Torrenton and Berico for their, the backpack program. I know the one on, this was the one in Cole Park, the one on Newfield Road was a cluster. I hope, um, they straighten that, from the hands, straightens that out next year, but, um, got a lot of complaints on that. Um, nice job on the car show for Torre for Volunteer Fire Department, they did a wonderful job. Question, did our team, our CERT team do the CERT challenge this year? No, they didn't. Guys, I saw it on the news, and I was, I was wondering, I was curious. And I just have to thank a couple of people. Mayor Carbone, Police Chief Baldwin, Deputy Chief, uh, Barone, and Sergeant Traffic, uh, Dustin Baldus, for their help in everything, opening the Rainbow Bridge, over the Rainbow Bridge.